I'd like to call the August 13th, 2019 Regular Meeting of the Fenton, Community High School District 100 Regular Board Meeting to order. Mary, may I have a roll call?
Yes. Jallowick. Peyton Howell.
Here.
Rego. Ramirez.
Yes.
Ting Pao Pong.
Present.
Wedeman.
Here. Okay, we have a quorum. Could we all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Okay, Sam, could you be so kind and please read our Fenton Mission and Belief Statements?
Absolutely. Our mission: Cultivate successful, passionate learners through rigor, relevance, and relationships. Our beliefs: Successful, passionate learners thrive when we champion innovative teaching and engaged learning. School and home collaborate effectively. We provide a safe, secure, and caring environment. We infuse social, emotional learning into academics and culture. Diversity empowers our learning community, and we prepare students to fulfill their civic
Thank you, Sam. Mary, do we have any requests for public comment?
No.
Okay. All right, thank you, Mary. So we move on to the District 100 Reports. James, if you could take that?
Sure. First one up is the start of the school year events, and we have a video, I believe, for you to describe the new teacher breakfast, teacher kickoff, all-staff kickoff. This was a Twitter pay tweet that I put out today of the new teacher breakfast. There was approximately 40 new teachers in Bensonville this school year. That includes District 2 and District 100. We have seven. Really great event. Thank you, Paul and Leo, for attending. It's really a chance for all the taxing bodies in Bensonville to unite and welcome our teachers to Bensonville. Jim, is there, do we have another video for today's event? The Welcome Back video? We'll get to Yovon in a minute.
Really? He took front and center on that one.
My arm's only swinging.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, it's coming up. The Welcome Back one?
Yeah, let's play that again.
You want to play it now?
Yes.
He just messed up Jim's order.
Hi, this is Amy, and I'm here to welcome back to the 1920 school year. We're going to have a great year this year.
Welcome back, everyone.
Welcome back.
And welcome back everybody. We're having a great year, and kicking the bikes.
We're so excited for the 2020 school year. Welcome back to the school, and it's going to be great.
Go Bicep.
Welcome back, everybody.
What's your fourth one right here?
Go Bicep.
Welcome back.
Hey, welcome back, everyone. Happy year.
Hi, this is President Gray, speaking from here. Welcome, you guys all back to school this year. Welcome back, all you biceps, brachially. Hey, welcome back, great school year. Go Bicep.
Happy birthday, Bicep. My career's here.
My name is Sylvia Alguia, and I'm here representing the community of Sparta. Go Bicep.
Welcome back, Fenton High School. So awesome, hey, Fenton High School. We love our students, we love you, teacher. They're going to rock this year. We're looking so forward.
Welcome back, everyone. Go Bicep.
We had a cake cut out. That was my first promotion of creating a video. So, no, we showed that to the staff. Let's get Yovon in there. Go back or forward. Okay. Yovon, you want to talk about your tradition in staff meetings?
So, always with my kids. At home, I always do the first day of school pictures. So, when I first took the job a couple of years ago, I'm like, oh, it's the first day of pictures. So, I take a picture of the staff, and we start our Institute Day. So, that, this is, and then obviously I do it with the kids now for graduation, things like that. So, that was, that's how we started that. So, that was our first day. And on the right is our new teachers. And then over on the left is just some more of our first day Institute and things like that.
We really had a great day today. It's, I think, really a day of unity. We celebrated this morning with a breakfast. We celebrated what the focus will be this year. Strategic plan, obviously, as you know, is our compass. SEL, Equity, and so forth. I even introduced our district equity team that we would like to build. It was really good. And Paul was here to help cook burgers, and Jackie was here as well to give us support. I thought, you guys felt the energy, positive energy, to start a new school year?
Yes. Everyone's really excited to be back, all the staff.
Yep. It was very upbeat, very upbeat, very positive. Good.
Next slide. You did that already. Okay, the next one is the portrait of a graduate. This has been coming, just a quick background. As you know, this was about a year ago. District 2, 7, and 100, Wooddale, Bensonville, and Fenton got together, and it was a directive by the board, hey, look, let's create a portrait of a graduate. So, what is a portrait of a graduate? It's basically, at the end, when students graduate here at Fenton, okay, what kind of traits do we want them to have? What kind of skill set, what kind of values should they have at the end, at the end of their high school career? So, this is really a collaborative, united effort from three districts to create this portrait. We're going to create it, okay? We haven't done any work, but this is what we have done. We focused on three dates, October 1st, 15th, and 22nd. We'll beat that date. We'll have a general survey from our community of what they're looking for. We'll compile that survey results and come up with, with a portrait of a graduate. Each district will approximately have 20 committee members, so approximately 60 individuals will compose of this committee. What will be the result? It will be similar to our strategic plan. That kind of format, Joe Porto, who was our facilitator for our strategic plan, will also facilitate this. Okay. I just wanted to give you guys a heads up. This is coming real quick, in October. I'm working with Jen, Dr. Stelzer and Corbett, to make this happen, so you're aware. Next slide. Just real quick, a great, great honor for us, your district, will present at the III Conference in regards to our equity story. 2019-2020 Advanced Placement District of the Year. We will present from 12:30 to 1:30 at the Sheraton Grand Hotel, November 23rd. The presenters include Paul, Yovon, Michelle, and myself. We will tell our story to all the school districts in Illinois. It's really, really an honor. It's time for us to shine and basically to communicate what we have done this last three or four, five years. Really proud of that. Paul was a driver of this, hey, look, let's present, let's be out there, let's expose and promote Fenton, and that's what we're doing. As you know, we were also recognized in Florida last month nationally, so this will be something here, right here at home. More to come on that. Next slide. Just real quickly, this is my shout-out and Yovon's shout-out in regards to our students. This summer, we had three student workers that showed up every single day to work, to earn a little bit of money, to learn some work ethics. Stephanie Martell, Henry Morales, and Jessica Padilla, they showed up every single time, okay? Whether it's putting the floor in the fitness center, they didn't really help with the F there in front, you know? It was just, it was just a cute picture, but everything, cleaning the windows, mopping the floors, cleaning the lockers, cleaning the buses, and so forth. So, huge shout-out to the three. I think they approximately made $800 in two months.
Nice.
Really, really happy. Next slide. I want to thank the board, okay? It was a busy summer. Thank you for coming. Paul was here, as you guys know, barbecue, helping the statue there. Patty's always here in regards to the band camp, even though she doesn't have a student here. You know, that's, that's just, you know, Bicep fever there, so really wanted to give you a shout-out.
Had to wean myself off of it.
It didn't work. We still need it.
I couldn't go cold turkey.
Jackie and Leo out there in regards to the food pantry, really, because we were short that day. And again, Leo and Paul at the Chamber of Commerce. Juliet was there for the blood drive. Just, you know, little things in there. It's good for folks to see you guys and get back. Juliet, Paul, and Jackie were here today for lunch, and it was, it's a really good time. It's exposure, I think, it's critical.
Okay. Thank you, James.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, very good. Those are very good, good things that are going on.
Yes.
Now, we move on to the consent agenda. There has been revision in the personal report in the consent agenda. Does anybody have any questions regarding and/or comments regarding anything on the consent agenda?
Sure. I would like to just step in real quick and let Sam explain that of the changes there and why we had to revise it at the last minute.
Let me just take a look at the revised, revised personal report on the front. We added in Andrew Tadaro, who was a teacher's assistant here. Now, he's going to be an FMLA leave special ed teacher. We wanted to get that in.
Sam, that's on page one.
That's on page one, yes. Andrew Tadaro is added in, so he wasn't on the original personal report. He's on the revised one, so we asked for your approval of him. And there was, under support staff, we took out Michael Bartello, who originally was going to be one-on-one special ed teacher assistant, but then took another position. So, we took him out, so he's not in your revised personal report. Everything else is the same.
Took another position here?
No, elsewhere.
Oh, elsewhere, okay.
So, when teachers are sponsors, and like, there's one that went from .5 to 1. Do they, is that because, like, somebody else dropped out?
Right. Sometimes they will split that stipend, and then so if one person drops out, we offer the stipend fully to one individual or find another one if needed.
Okay.
Good, good question, good clarification there.
All right, very good. Any other questions or comments regarding the consent agenda? Then may I have a motion to approve the revised consent agenda as presented?
I make the motion.
Thank you, Mary Ann. Thank you, Jackie. Roll call, please.
Peyton Howell.
Yes.
Jallowick.
Yes.
Ramirez.
Yes.
Ting Pao Pong.
Yes.
Wedeman.
Yes. Okay, thank you. That motion has passed. Next, we will move on to the next discussion item regarding the 2019-2020 tentative budget. And James, you can take that one.
I've been psyched to try to present this, because Bruce usually does this, but it's my turn to shine a little bit here in regards to my financial skills. Okay? And I'm going to do it standing up.
All right.
And with my point.
Just say it's from.
I got to rub it in, Bruce. Don't you have that chart? Okay? You didn't have that chart. So, real quickly, remember, this is a tentative budget, and Bruce did a great job last, last month to preview the budget, okay? It's a balanced budget, really good, fiscally responsible, and so forth. So, is approved, we would, we would like you guys to approve this tentative budget for now, okay? We have 30 days to discuss it, as well as the public, okay? And by September 25th, we take a vote on it. So, we're voting for a tentative budget to be displayed for 30 days. Final decision is on September 25th, just to make sure we're all on the same page there. Next slide. Okay. Are we missing a slide, Jim? Could you go forward? One more. Okay. I created a slide. Go back. It should give you the percentage in regards to federal, state. One more.
Hang on.
Okay.
Tell a joke or something.
Say it again, tell a joke or something.
No.
No, 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 we don't want to. Look at Jackie, she's getting worse.
Bruce would have had this ready, as I'm on the other side.
You don't have the pretty charts, though.
Bruce is okay?
Bruce, sundown to New York, so you drive.
For college.
Rochester.
Rochester.
Rochester. There it is. You got to have this slide, right? You got to have this slide. This slide is basically, where's our money coming from? Okay? It's the revenues. As you know, it's approximately 89% is coming from local taxes, property tax. State is about 8%, and federal's about 3% in the ballpark. Next slide. Next question is, where do we put all this money in, right? So, 86% basically goes to our educational fund. 77% goes to our operation and maintenance. Three, approximately 3%, and 3% goes to our transportation and IMRF or Social Security. And we got a working cash here, right there, sliver over there, approximately 1% basically our, our checking account, if you want to call it that, okay? That's where our revenues go. Okay, our expenses. Where does, where do we spend? As you can see, blue, educational fund, okay? Education, anything that's related to education, salaries, supplies, social workers, benefits, and all of that goes right there. It's about 83% of our revenue pays, 83% is our expenditure, our expenses, what we're spending on. 8.99% is our operation and maintenance to keep the building in line. Approximately 3% is transportation. IMRF is about 2.5%. Next slide. This is the master slide. This is the master slide, and we're going to go through this real quick. There's two funds, operating funds and non-operating funds, okay? Operating funds is, that's the funds to make this building work, or district work, okay? As you can see, it's education, operation and maintenance, transportation, Social Security, IMRF, and working cash, okay? Non-operation fund is not related to operating school. Basically, this debt service right here is how much we owe, okay? And how much interest that we need to pay. Basically, in 2014 and 15, 16 and 17, we took out two, basically two loans. We call them bonds, right? Okay? Now, we got to pay them back, okay? That's the debt service. Life safety, if we want to change.
Is that for the remodel?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. It was approximately $13 million, okay? So, we'll be paying that for a while. Our life safety is anything that's related, if we want to buy a door or something to that effect. It's minimal. And capital projects, as we know, is what we, what we basically do, whether it's some of the work that we're doing with, with the drainage, the floors, and so forth, but I'll get to this in a minute. But this is what we want to work on, the 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, really four funds here in regards to our, what are the funds, where are the, where are the expenses going? And this is important, the beginning fund balance. This is, this is basically, as you know, the fiscal school year starts July 1. That's where, that's our balance here.
Somebody's operating funds are actually going up by a percentage there, and then the transportation went down.
Yeah, I'll go get through that real quick. So, what, here's the game plan, right? To try to match this, to balance it, so it's pretty much equal, okay? From beginning, July 1 to January, January 30th of 2020.
June 30th.
June 30th, I'm sorry. June 30th, thank you. We want to, just to keep an eye on that. So, here's the revenue. How much came in? How much are we going to spend? Okay? I'm going to cut to the chase. So, if someone asks, hey, look, what's our budget? I usually go with that, basically, right here. Our budget's about $31 million, okay? Our budget revenue is $31.8 million. Our expenditure budget is $31.6 million. Those are great numbers, and we'll get to that in a minute. But here's the revenues here, okay? Educational fund, we expect approximately $26 million. Operation 2, okay, let me just go through it. Here's the education, beginning balance of $15 million. We collect all that money from those three resources, local taxes, federal and state, and so forth, and we're plugging them in here. So, we're putting 26.5 here, an increase of 1.87. Expenditure is 25.7 million. Here's what we're expecting, our expenditure total. You can see the difference, there's a variance of a plus, positive, approximately $900,000 there, okay? Next one, the operation funds. Here, we started approximately $2 million. Revenues we're putting in there is $2.5 million approximately, an increase of 2.4, okay? Our expenditure is $2.7 million. An increase in expenditure is 2.3. It's a negative 3.44, okay? Negative 3.44. We're claiming this will be the fund balance. Next one is transportation, same sort of thing, revenue of $1.1 million, $1 million here. It's a decrease, a negative, of 5.7%. And you're asking yourself, why is that? State government is not giving us enough money, okay? State government, it went down 5%. So, if we were getting $10 million, now they're giving us $5 million, just an example, okay? Expenditure, we're expected to spend about $1.5 million on transportation, which is an increase of .08%. So, we're, there's a negative 4.30 here, okay? So, we got two negatives here, okay? Then the next one is IMF, Social Security. There's the fund balance here. Revenue's $1 million. We're planning to spend $900,000. It's a negative, okay? Variance there. Positive here, I'm sorry, positive and variance there, so that's a positive, and so forth. What I'm trying to work here with you is that in the end, the total here, okay? Basically, the number we want to look to, look at is the revenues. It's a total of an increase of 1.7%. Our expenditure is less than 1.7. It's 1.2%, okay? So, there, I believe we're in the positive of about $200,000 there, okay? Does that kind of make sense? So, there's some negatives here, but a lot of positives. We end up in the positive, okay? We're projecting another year of balanced budget. If you, if you put it all in, you combine operating funds and non-operating funds, here's the total revenue, like what I said, about $32 million. Expenditure's about $31.6. Our total revenue increase for this year is 1.7, but look at our expenditure, okay? We're spending within our means. This is how much we're making, this is how much we're spending. We're spending less than what we're making, okay? I know when you guys came on board, say, hey, look, balanced budget. We want to get out of deficit spending. That's exactly what we've been doing, okay? I believe there's a third year in a row, okay? Really proud of that. We're working very, very hard, and here's something to keep in mind. Balanced budget without eliminating programs for our students, without eliminating jobs, actually increase in salaries, okay? And we're able to do that and do the great stuff we're doing, okay? And so, I want to give out, I know Bruce is probably going to watch this. Shout-out to Bruce for putting this all together for us, and, and we're going to continue to work hard for taxpayers and our, our school district to make sure we got a balanced budget, number one, and we're fiscally responsible. I think these two numbers, you know, there's a saying, there is a joke I want to say. In Italian, they say, "Matematico è una opinione." Mathematic is not an opinion, and that's what it is up there. Okay? How was that, Italian? Pretty good.
All right, thank you, James. And may I have a motion that the Board of Education approve the 2019-2020 tentative budget as presented and place it on public display in the district office. It is further recommended that the board schedule a public hearing at 7:00 PM during the regularly scheduled meeting on Wednesday, September 25th, 2019, prior to adoption of the final budget. Thank you, Patty. May I have a second?
Wait before we second, and I just have a question.
Yes.
It is further recommended that the board schedule a public hearing at 7:00? Don't we normally do that? Why do we need another one?
Well, that's public comments.
Oh, okay.
We want, we want the public to have their time to question the budget.
I just wanted to make sure I understood that. Okay. I'll second it.
Yeah.
Thank you, James.
You're welcome.
So, it's not, we're not scheduling an additional public?
Right.
It's just.
It's part of the meeting.
Yeah, that's why I didn't get it, but okay, I got it. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Patty. May I have a second?
I second it.
Okay, thank you, Mary Ann. Roll call, please.
Peyton Howell.
Yes.
Ramirez.
Yes.
Ting Pao Pong.
Yes.
Jallowick.
Yes.
Wedeman.
Yes. All right. The motion has passed. The next item is a discussion item only regarding the Wooddale Elected Official Barbecue.
This barbecue's for you. Wooddale sent out an invitation for all elected officials in the taxing body of Wooddale, which includes Fenton, so please, 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 if you could attend. I will be also flipping burgers that day, probably. It's Wednesday, September 18th, 5 to 8, Salt Creek Golf Club. The purpose is basically to get to know each other, to get to know the elected officials in introduction, and build community word to words. Park District is hosting this event. Wooddale Park District, so.
Is it casual?
It's very casual, yes. I will not be wearing a suit.
Okay, good.
Flip your burgers.
I'll be, yeah, yeah.
Bicep t-shirts and shorts.
There you go, bicep t-shirt. We could do that. Yeah.
Okay, so that's something definitely to, to keep in mind.
Yes.
All right, thank you, James. Now, we go on to the committee reports. Bensonville Community Foundation, Juliet is not here.
Kit's on there, too.
Kit, do you have any updates on the Bensonville Community Foundation? There's no updates, okay? All right, and then the Finance Committee, Mary Ann and myself.
We have it.
We have nothing.
Nothing.
Yeah, there's no updates there. IASP Delicate, nothing until November.
There was no meeting this month.
Oh, there was no meeting, okay.
How about Big?
The Big? Big is still in hibernation.
Are they on sabbatical or what?
Yeah.
It's not even on the list.
NetSec? Patty, any, anything?
They approved the budget.
Yes.
Yeah. And there was an increase in that. I don't, you know, you might feel, see, talk more with the operation.
Sure. Balanced budget again for NetSec. NetSec, what is NetSec? It's basically our special ed co-op for DuPage. We say, we spend, we send approximately, bicep students, approximately 20 students are enrolled in that program. Great, great program. It was the budget, it's a balanced budget. There was an increase for administrators there, as you remember, Patty, approximately 3%. And they were going to do some capital project as well, like, like what we're doing here, Kit disagrees. It would be on this section of the board, board meeting, let's say, hey, look, James, look into sustainability.